I'll wait for you, Rob. We're good. Excellent. Ma'am Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Mackey.
We're good. Excellent.
Counselor Mackey.
President.
Counselor Gambold.
President.
Counselor Burley. Counselor Mackey. Counselor Burley.
President.
Counselor Carlton. Counselor McQueen will be joining us in a few moments. Counselor Desai.
President.
Counselor Patterson. Warden Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Columbus. Counselor Kivini. Counselor Body. Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Milne.
Present.
Counselor Soever.
Present.
Counselor Boardingill.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members in attendance with the exception of Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Turn next to land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Shinabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani and the Wendot, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognized also the Meti and the Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live with peace, in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Counsel, is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Being none, I will simply say that if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. All right, item number six is adoption of minutes. Item 6A is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated July 14, 2022. I'm looking for a mover to put it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Is there any discussion? And I'll call the question, all those in favor. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Item 6B is a Long Term Care Committee of Management Minutes, which are dated July 12, 2022. Moved by Counselor Woodbury, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Any discussion there? I call the question then, all those in favor. Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie, thank you. We do not have closed meeting matters. Now on to number eight. The Public Health of Gray, excuse me, Public Health, Gray Bruce Board of Health Minutes dated May 27, 2022. Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Dr. Zayed is here, believe. Will you be speaking to the minutes?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I'm happy to provide the Gray Bruce Health Unit update on the minutes for the Board of Health. I will update, I will provide an update on three items, COVID-19 and monkeypox virus, opioid drug overdose crisis and vaping regulation submission to Health Canada.
It appears that Dr. Zayed is muted. There we go.
The provincial key metrics in relation to COVID, to COVID-19 that is provided by the Ministry of Health every two weeks through a scorecard showed the situation right now in terms of cases. There is 14-day decrease or no change in cases for the seven-day average. The deaths, there is also a 14-day decrease or no change with a 70, 7-day average daily new death is 9 and 80% increase in 7-day average versus the two weeks ago. The positivity, there is 7% increase versus two weeks ago. The outbreak is 8% decrease and the hospitalization show 54% increase. The ICU admission, 30% increase. However, if we talk, if we compare Ontario versus the global, the global aspect, we find that the situation is slightly increased overall, but not as much compared to other countries. In terms of the, the health units or in, in Ontario, if you go into more details, 13 public health units that showed hotspots, which is, which meaning increased, significant increase of more than 200 new cases clustered in the last week. So Gray Bruce Health Unit is not among those health units. In terms of the average weekly doses for, for Gray Bruce Health Unit, there is a slight increase, but not, not above 10 per day. And again, there is, this slight increase is not really profiled on or reflected on the severity or the mortality. In terms of the, again, the, the number of cases in general as a heat map or a positivity, the, we find that compared to the, the weeks before, we, there is no, there is no much increase in positivity that, that requires any change in, in the public health restrictions. That's with regard to the, to the disease itself. So overall, we are, we are in a, in a good, in a good shape and we are, there is no sort of scaling up of, of, of the, for infection control. In terms of COVID vaccine, currently we are providing at least a weekly vaccine clinic through the community centers across the board in Gray Bruce. We also provide vaccine by partnering with pharmacies and primary care. We focus on the low coverage areas and applying various strategies to meet the various contents of vaccine acceptance. We partner with the Ministry of Health to provide mobile and indoor clinics in addition to the clinic that the Public Health Unit is providing. We're working on engaging the primary care for vaccine delivery for children below five years, which is, will be available in the next few days. In addition to that, we have a full preparedness plan for vaccine, for COVID response and communication strategy. That's with regard to COVID pandemic and COVID vaccine and preparedness. With regard to monkeypox, we had one case two weeks ago and the, the situation, the, the, the person already recovered and of isolation and the acquisition event was in Toronto and there is no other contacts. Education to high priority population is, is ongoing and we provided a vaccine clinic for prophylaxis for a certain group. In terms of, of the opioid situation, we have a Como subgroup that work on opioid prevention and identified nine priorities for the provincial action. In addition to that, there is a prevention subgroup committees from that worker group. And the, for this, this, first regarding the, the nine priorities that was also enclosed in the Alpha Resolution that was moved by, by Alpha and the Como Executive, we, the main nine priorities include a multi-sectoral task force, including people with lived experience, expanded the access to harm reduction program and practice, ensure sustainability of support for substance use prevention and mental health promotion initiative, expand the collection, analysis, reporting of timely integrated epidemiological data, expand the access for, to treatment of opioid use disorder, address the structural stigma, discrimination and related harms, advocate to and support to the federal government to decriminalize personal use and possession of substances and increase, impaired with increased investment in health and social services, acknowledge and address socioeconomic determinants of health, systemic racism and their intersection that are risk factor for substance use, providing funding and other support to enable consistent community leadership by people who use drugs and by community organization. These are the nine priorities that were adopted for the public health action. The work of the subgroup include a standing committee for one-year period and will be reassessed at the end of the year. It is a partnership between local public health and Public Health Ontario. The committee is created to support public health unit work and prevent substance-related harms with a focus on evidence-based childhood and youth intervention. Co-chired by Gray Bruce Health Unit and Public Health Ontario and the membership of 10 health units, including Toronto Public Health, Waterloo, Peterborough Public Health, Kingston, Southwestern Public Health, San Comas, Coka, Brand County, York Region and Porcupine Health Unit. So there is a variation of the expertise and, and experiences which will enrich the work across this, this work for the intervention of gear toward prevention. The main objective is understanding the evidence-based intervention for prevention, for preventing substance use among youth and mitigating adverse childhood experiences. The second, understand evidence-based integrated social determinants of health and address the impact of structural discrimination, describe the local programming in Ontario and develop a logic model or framework to map out areas of coverage and gaps for intervention and consider overlap with mental health promotion. These are the main objectives of this, of this worker group or subgroup committee. The deliverables is, is focused on three deliverables this year. Develop an environmental scan for early child and youth programs mapped to evidence of effectiveness on substance use outcome. Given that we have many overlapping and many services. So that's, this environmental scan would be really very important. Develop a data summary and knowledge exchange on the current epidemiology and that include analysis of the compass data, consider data from Public Health Unit and consider analysis of data from Ontario Drug Policy and Research Network and Office of the Chief Coroner. And the third objective is related to a grant proposal for conceptual framework. And this conceptual framework that we have now currently a grant that we are working on with CIHR. What, what we will benefit from this provincial group, it will benefit the local context in terms of human health prevention across the lifespan project or matrix project that is implemented or planned and implemented in, in Gray Bruce Health Unit as an important strategic goal and direction. People with lived experience, we need to have more insight on and engagement for people with lived experience, evidence-based intervention for the current projects and the partnership to focus on efficiency and the streamlining intervention in addition to evaluation and identifying areas of positive assets and areas of learning and improvement across Gray Bruce. So that's the update for the opioid. And the last update is related to endorsing the proposed regulation. There was a regulation related to vaping and the, there is, this proposed regulation were described as a first approach to introduce vaping product reporting requirement and ensure that the government, non-informed of vapor product industry practices is, is important to support the effort of health and vapor product manufacturer should be held to the same standard of accountability and scrutiny as tobacco product manufacturer through the enactment of proposed regulation and which include reporting on vaping product sales and information on sales of vaping products by brand sold in Canada and for export and reporting on ingredient, information on the ingredient of vaping substance by, is, is very important, the same way as there was regulation for, for the tobacco. So that was the summary of my update. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Zayed. Counselor and Chair Patterson, is there anything you wish to add?
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, County Council. Yes, I have three highlights to share. The Board has a brief five-minute educational update at each meeting. And at this meeting, we reviewed the roles and responsibilities of a public health manager. I find these educational notes to be very informative and they give board members a better understanding of the programs and services that are provided by the health unit. The Board also finalized the orientation package and discussed the length of the county appointments to the Board. It was recommended that board members be appointed for a two-year term rather than one year. And I do want to point out that this is a recommendation and not a requirement. The Board also approved the 1% mandatory programs-based funding increase granted by the Ministry of Health. Mandatory programs are cost-shared between the Ministry of Health and Gray and Bruce Counties. It is a 70/30 split. So to be eligible to keep the additional funding from the ministry, Gray and Bruce Counties would have to match the 1% increase. The total contributions between the counties would increase by 27,000 with Gray's share being just under 16,000 and Bruce Counties' share would be 11,000. And this motion was approved by the Board of Health. And that's the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Soever, you have a question?
Yes, certainly. One of the things that I've been watching is the, the COVID in wastewater in Ontario and it's, it's going up, not as fast as it was a few weeks ago, but it's still on the rise. Now, I know that we, we do take samples at our Craiglea wastewater treatment plant as well. Where can one access that data for the COVID from the local area? I know a lot of health units have that data posted, but I couldn't find it here.
Thank you, Mayor Soever, for your question. Actually, this data for us is, is available by, by, and, and integrated by the data analyst. But unfortunately, the data is very confounded and skewed data. That is not helpful because we only have 16% of Gray Bruce, the, depending on the municipal water, which is a very small percentage. In addition, that there are many confounding factors with this data. For example, people who are, who are residing, not residing in Owen Sound, but comes to work. So there is discrepancy between the weekend and the weekdays, morning and night. There is a spike and this spike is not helpful that compared to other health units like Ottawa, for example, where they rely on more than 95% on municipal water. So the, this spike is just going up one day and down the next day. So it doesn't really inform us with, with data that is helpful to have a trend, to, to try to discern a trend from this data. So, so far, it's not, it's not helpful, but we are trying to see other ways. The last, the last conversation was to try to get only one sample per week, which is a Monday. And still yesterday, the data analyst told me that still there is, there is issues with, with, with the confounding factors with this data. So we are relying with, on what it matters and we don't want to confuse the public with data that's not reliable.
Perfect, thank you. So you mentioned Ottawa. Ottawa seems to be a hotspot lately in terms of, you know, their, their, their hospitalizations and their wastewater and everything else. But yesterday's wastewater symbol. Now, the AMO conference is being held in Ottawa this year in a couple of weeks. Do you have any recommendations on, you know, going to the super-spreader event?
Well, it's again, using mask, keeping distance, washing hands. And the golden, the golden rule is stay at home if sick. But for others, I mean, but anyway, the keeping the distance and wearing the mask mostly all the time is important in gatherings and keep, keep safe.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then it's perhaps time to call the question. All those in favor of the report, anyone opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much and thank you, Dr. Zayed.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one bylaw at number nine. It's with respect to row 19 and 21, the roundabout there in the town of the Blue Mountains. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Milne, seconded by Counselor Boardignon. Any discussion on that bylaw? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that too is Carrie. Onwards now to good news and celebrations. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I'm happy to report that this past weekend, the Rotorock Highlanders had their annual cruise night. They last had it in 2019 and then missed two years due to COVID. It was a great turnout, hundreds of cars lined up down Main Street. And at the end of that, the Rotorock Highlanders generated $2,404.07 in profits, which will be donated to I've Got Your Back 911 in support of mental health initiatives for first responders. In a truly community event fashion, there was other organizations as well that benefited from their volunteer activities at this event. The Rotary Club of Markdale, Warden Hicks, had a barbecue, which, which provided food for the attendance. And the barbecue generated an estimated of $1,400 in profits for Rotary Club activities. And the road relics generated a further 1,200 in ticket sales for their motorcycle draw, which I'm on the fence about because I did buy a ticket. And this is just more competition for me now. So the, the ticket sales for the motorcycle draw was for, the proceeds were going to Chapman's House Hospice. There, there was over 200 cars on Main Street and they were overflowing the backup lot where the old food townies to be in Markdale was full as well. And the Highlanders expressed their gratitude to everyone who volunteered and everyone who participated. Thank you, Warden Hicks. Also, sorry, I do, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Pat and his staff for being very expeditious with the permit process. It was, the turnaround time was a record turnaround time and we were, we're very glad, very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Next is Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I just wanted to bring congratulations to all of the 40 recipients of the Queen's Jubilee Commemorative Award that was presented on Sunday by our MP Alex Ruffett, his, his gathering. This is an important award that recognizes the expertise, but also the community engagement and support of many, many folks from Gray Bruce and Owen Sound, his constituencies. So my congratulations on that and just to highlight that three of those recipients were from our municipality. Marjorie Davison, longtime resident. And Martin Riordan was another one and our own Harley Greenfield. So we're very, very proud of these folks and I know there's one more to come, but those folks deserve it and we're so proud of them. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Columbus. And Kim, do you want to maybe mention one other person?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks so much, Counselor Columbus, for bringing this forward. I would like to, you know, let counsel know and to acknowledge our own Kevin McNabb, who received a Jubilee Medal for his leadership and initiative and in the first responder category and most specifically his, his work on community paramedicine and the Supportive Outreach Service or SOS. So big congratulations and thanks to Kevin.
Okay, so next is Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. First, I would just like to say, based on CIO Wingrove's announcement, congratulations to Kevin McNabb, that is quite an outstanding honor. I do want to just mention two things. There's always something to celebrate in Gray County. Soggy Valley Conservation, or rather Soggy Valley Children's Safety Village, located at Sulfur Springs Conservation Area in West Gray, held their Super Safety Days 2022, which was a great success. Certainly is safety programming for children that, as a council here, we certainly support. And Newstadt Springs Brewery hosted an open house for the village of Newstadt this past opportunity to reconnect and celebrate the village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Next is Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Yesterday, I had the pleasure to have attended the Pan-African Flag waving, waving, raising, excuse me, at Georgian College and attended with Kim and with Selwyn. MP Ruff, new president of Georgian College, Kevin Weaver was in attendance. They raised this flag for the first time in recognition of Emancipation Day and they chose to do it non-sound given our long history of emancipation here. So it was, it's pretty special. And March 24, 2021, the Canadian Government Parliament passed a unanimous resolution to recognize Emancipation Day and, and declare it for August 1st. Well, I can't remember the first mover was from the Liberal Party, but it was seconded by our Alex Ruff, which is pretty special to have private members bill being passed is unusual and unanimous vote, of course, is also pretty unusual. So it was a pretty special and something that I think Alex deserves a lot of credit for. Before that, Senator Wanda Banks and several others had tried to get it through and it would, you know, go to the end of the line, of course, is. And of course, as the Parliament dissolved for elections or otherwise, it kept getting bumped off the table and having to be brought again. So it was, it's nice to see that recognized and see the work done by Alex to pull in his party members and make sure they're, they're all there for it. This weekend, we celebrate the hundred and sixtieth. Emancipation Day here in Owen Sound, or really, I think it's more of a Gray County event than an Owen Sound event, given our history. It's the oldest running, continuously running festival or picnic in North America, which is pretty impressive. We all know there is indigenous people here long before we were here, but after the War of eighteen twelve, the British Government promised. Any slave or black person that fought alongside their side's land in, in Canada. And they were given land, as we know now, in the Priceville area. And they started to come in twenty, sorry, eighteen fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty. You know, the surveyors from England, Ireland, Scotland wouldn't have been here until the mid thirties or late thirties. So long before white settlers came into this region, there were black settlers that were welcomed and welcomed certainly by the NAWA. So on Friday night at Gray Roots Museum, there's a presentation, we have to be there at six, but I think it starts at seven, if I'm not mistaken. Speeches and educational things, and it's Diane Brathwaite is the speaker this year. Followed by the picnic at Harrison Park where it's been held for. Hundred-plus years, starting at ten AM with ceremonies there and then some pretty amazing music all day long. So if you are around, it's a really good event to come and, and attend. Lot of the historic families from the area come back to the picnic and. You know, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, fifth, sixth, seventh generation, whatever it is, come back and they bring their families back and they share stories and. And meet their, their cousins and it's, it's a special day. So encourage everyone to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Body. And next is Counselor Keveney.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Warden. I wanted to mention that there's going to be a special open line show for Bruce Gray, Owen Sound former MPP Bill Murdock. On Bay Shore Broadcasting's AM radio station five sixty tomorrow morning. Murdock, who's seventy-seven years old and has hosted the open line for many years, as many as three days a week, is in failing health. He is currently in hospice care after being diagnosed with cancer in recent years. Listeners are invited to call and share memories and say hello to Bill who will be listening. The show will start after the nine AM news. The number to call is five one nine three seven six seven 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 seven. So I hope lots of people will call in and share a memory with Bill. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Keveney. Counselor Patterson, you're next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Just sharing that if you're looking for something to do this weekend, on Saturday, the Hannover Raceway. Is holding its annual Dream of Glory Race with three-year-old trotters from all over Ontario racing. The purse is fifty thousand dollars and it's also being advertised as an extravaganza event for fireworks. So it should be a good evening. It's going to start at six fifteen, once only. Normally, it's an afternoon event. So if you're looking for something to do, come on out. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other, oh, sorry, Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just backing up to the Platinum Jubilee Award winners, our own Georgian Blast Carol Barfoot was one of the recipients. So we're quite proud of Carol for receiving that. Thank you.
Very good. I saw pictures of the coins. They're quite nice, aren't they? All right, have I got everyone now? I think I have. That said, we'll move on. We'll go to adjournment. So I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Gamble. All those in favor? Anyone opposeded? That is Carrie. Thank you. We'll take a second to turn over to Committee of the Whole.